The regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, September 18th, 2023. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever many, many thanks for the many successes that Batavia as a community has, including the ability to encourage students from foreign countries to come and attend Batavia High School and learn what we're all about, and more importantly, learning for us to learn what they are all about. So we're ever thankful and we appreciate the good efforts of these folks, and we ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who were serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered on each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. Tonight, as always, we also want to ask for vision and understanding and appreciation by the members of the city council as they go about voting and discussing the various items on our agenda. We are ever thankful for the nice, great, and wonderful community that we live in, and we appreciate the friendliness and the religious attitudes and approvals that we have. And we are just very, very thankful that we, as a community, have a great understanding of each other and that we, as a community, know how to really do things the right way as a people living in a community together. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Lancy, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the city, Kirk, please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger. Twelve, thirteen present, one absent.
We have the necessary qualms to conduct business. Very good. Moving to item number four, which is just a quick reminder from the chair that we ask anybody who's going to address us tonight that they please come forward and use the podium and specifically speak into the microphone because this is being broadcast or recorded and will be telecast on BATV. So if you don't use the microphone, it's sometimes very difficult for people to hear what you're trying to say. All right, moving to item number five. Items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Anybody in the council? Okay, moving right along. Item six is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, would you present that, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place unfiled the committee of the whole minutes for July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, 2023, and August 22nd, 2023. Approvals: The September 15th, 2023 payroll, the amount of $1,054,453.17. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,135,619.16. The city council minutes for September 5th, 2023. The July 2023 city council financial report. Resolution 23-107-R is a request for an extension of validity for the final plat for Windmill Place, Unit 1, First Res subdivision, variation from the subdivision regulations. Resolution 23-106-R is a request for an extension of validity for the final plat for Batavia Logistics Center subdivision, variation from the subdivision regulations. Resolution 23-111-R authorizing support of participation in the 2023 Safe Roads to School grant program. Resolution 23-114-R awarding a sculpture commission for the West Side Cemetery columbarium. Resolution 23-110-R I.D. resolution for construction on state highways. Resolution 23-112-R approving the 12 KV and 35 KV installation along Red Ant Road. Resolution 23-113-R approving directional bore for 114 North Kirk, 35 KV electric service. Resolution 23-115-R approving task order number 14, that's with power system engineering, to provide design engineering services for the main substation rebuild for an amount not to exceed $182,750. Resolution 23-35 is repealing ordinance 9-26 and creating the Batavia Act of Transportation Advisory Commission. Approval: Diamond-level sponsorship of the Flag Day Monument Gala on September 30th, 2023. Approval of a Class G liquor license, that is for a special use for bar evolution for the Batavia Flag Monument Gala event on September 30th. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Move by Alderman Sulfah, second, no, move by Alderman Chantet, second, by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda that's presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Approved. All right, moving to item seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Or?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have Brian Panazzo, who is here from Riverside Pizza. At our last committee of the whole meeting, we had a discussion about how Riverside Pizza has a plan to expand their business here in Batavia. Brian wasn't able to attend that meeting last week, and there were some questions that I wasn't able to answer on his behalf. So I have invited him here tonight to share with you what his business plan is. And following this discussion, Brian has submitted his application for conditional use, and then that will be following the ordinary process of going to plan commission first and then coming back to you. So at this time, I would like to introduce to you Brian Panazzo, who will talk about his business plan.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Brian Panazzo. I'm one of the owners of Riverside Pizza and Pub. I guess there was some talk about what we're looking to do, and I just wanted to kind of answer the questions that were at the last meeting. Let me start by saying, our initial, our initial action was to look at the space next door to us, which we did. We had a contractor come in. We talked with BEI on it as an expansion for a party room. We were looking for a party room because we get no less than 10 calls a month for parties of 20, 30, or 40. And it's ever since we've opened. So we feel like this is an area of business that we're missing. And if you've ever been to Riverside, you know the layout. It's very difficult to close a whole section off for a party. Extremely difficult. We've tried it. It does not work. It becomes a nightmare. So we did look into popping through the wall, expanding about 1,400 square feet, and we got some estimates. And we would have to, because the space would become bigger, we would have to add bathrooms. We would have to do the sprinkler system. We would have to do the HVAC. And it became this initial bid of $350,000 for 1,400-square-foot party room, which is not sustainable. I mean, that is, we would never make our money back on that. We do have a concept in South Elgin called Overflow. And it was designed to be just that. It was overflow for Riverside. We didn't initially think it would be a good party space, but it started becoming a great party space. And actually, the first, first people to actually book that space was the city of South Elgin for the Fire Chief's retirement party. And then that kind of clicked with us. We can kind of, you know, expand this as a party room for Riverside. So we are booked through December right now in South Elgin for parties. And once Bulldog Nutrition space came available, you know, light bulb, why don't we do an overflow down here and do the same concept? One of the aspects of our business is gaming. It is not the purpose of our business by any means, as it's not the purpose of our business at Riverside. It does help sustain with increasing costs and constant increases in employment liabilities. So it helps us stay in business. But again, it is definitely not the purpose of our business. We are actually, I know we're allowed five. I don't think we'll be able to fit five in there. It's a very small space. It is perfect for what we're looking to do as overflow space and for party room space. But that would just be an additional aspect to it. We are doing it as a separate corporation because not all the partners in Riverside are in overflow. That was kind of our little side project that we started in South Elgin. There are five partners in Riverside. There's only three. One of them is just an operating tour asylum in overflow. So not all the partners are involved, and that's why it was a separate corporation. But we do link our POS system to our kitchen in Riverside. So let's say you walk into Riverside and it's jam-packed. Or there's a lot of kids and you just kind of wanted a quiet night to go and watch the game and have some wings and pizza. You could walk over to overflow, and we can take your order, put it in the POS system, it prints in the kitchen, and we bring it over. So you essentially get the same effect without leaving our business. So we've found it as a great tool to capture that business that we were losing. We were losing people that were walking out because we're too busy or too many kids, you know, they just wanted a quieter night or more of an adult night. So that it became this, this awesome tool to capture that business we were initially I know there was a question on the employees. Overflow employees can pick up at Riverside. They, they have once or twice when we're in a pinch because it's the same business. We have the same POS system. So essentially, you know, they already walk in knowing the business, same menu and same everything. So that's been a nice tool, especially if they want to pick up some hours, they can go to Riverside if they're not at overflow I think that was about all I had, and I know there were a lot of questions. So I'm going to open it to some questions that you guys had.
Anybody have any questions you'd like to ask? Alderman Jazzy?
A few questions. So this, this location, is there going to be Riverside signage on it?
No, it's going to be overflow. We serve Riverside food. So we have the Riverside menus, Riverside napkins. Pizza's come over in Riverside boxes, but it is overflow.
Okay, so there will be a sign that says overflow?
Overflow, yeah. We actually incorporated the river from Riverside into that sign. So it's kind of, it's a little play on words, you know, the river's overflowing, so overflow.
And then somebody could go in there, separate from entering Riverside, just if they want to just go to overflow as if it's its own bar?
Correct.
Okay, so own bar, staffed bartender.
Yep.
You can go in there, and then if you want to, if you're there and you're placing an order, is there a waiter, waitress there, or do you?
Yeah, it's honestly, it's like a one-to-two-man operation because it's so small.
Gotcha.
So they just place the order with the bartender, just as they would, you know.
And they put it in the POS and it gets delivered. Okay.
And we're talking four or five tables, maybe 15 seats at the bar. We were hoping to do some dartboards. We've got pool tables at Riverside, dartboards at overflow. So we're kind of capturing both of that crowd. We'd like to do some leagues, just like we do leagues for pool at Riverside, and that's turned out great as well.
Thank you.
Chantet?
Sorry, but I would just make this as a remark. One, having been a waiter, my question when this initially came up for discussion was, where do the employees clock in? Where do they think they work? You answered it. It is, it's a separate business.
Yes.
And to the public, it will look like a separate business, although we know better. It's overflow.
Correct.
I get it, and I like the concept. I really do.
Thank you.
I also regret my vote for video gaming. The expansion of video gaming in town, it has not gone exactly the way I wanted it to. And I have sided with Alderman Uer in not wanting to expand it. The distinction here for, for me was if the two businesses were so blended and almost unrecognizable that there was a difference between them, then it would feel a little better to me that we're expanding a business and expanding a license for, for an existing business, which on paper we are, but on paper we also aren't. So it makes me uncomfortable.
I understand that. As I said before, it is definitely not our, the purpose of our business.
It also took three minutes to fail a sting with a fully-staffed restaurant at a restaurant in my ward. This is not a one- or two-man operation. It's at least a two-man operation to make sure you're watching those machines. I would hate to see a small operation like this get knocked off, kilter by, by getting stung. Although, we love the money going to post prom. We think it's a wonderful activity. I would rather that money stay in your pockets so you can invest in your business.
Yeah, the issue is, in order for me to open a place like that, that's small, with the increasing costs, it just, it wouldn't make sense.
Do you think that you can adequately supervise, and do you think you can staff it with people that will take it seriously?
Oh, I guarantee it. I take it seriously, you know.
I take your pizza seriously, so I'm very concerned about, I'm very concerned about this.
So do I. I take my food very seriously and my business very seriously, my staff as well. I will tell you, where we have an idea of where the gaming machines will be is right next to where the bartender or whoever's working is. I mean, it's in plain sight. Also, overflow is 21 and over. It's not, and that was the whole, if there's too many kids at Riverside, you know, you can walk over. So it's, it's 21 and over there. So you can't even walk in if you're under 21. Now, for the private parties, anyone under 21, we rope them off. And it's very important that we explain to people who are, you know, we're going to have 15 kids here. Great, no problem. We'll rope it off. They are not allowed to touch it, you know. We're essentially closing them for that party. So that is definitely not a concern of mine. We haven't had an issue in overflow as of yet.
Okay.
Just answered my question.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Lancy?
Not necessarily a question, but more of a statement. Just thank you, guys. I get nothing but raving reviews from people that go to Riverside, including my, my in-laws who absolutely love it. So we get it every time they're in town. But we love the place. Glad you're expanding, and best luck to you.
Thank you. I did want to mention one thing without taking up too much time. I knew Batavia was the perfect spot for our next Riverside. Every time I wanted to go on a date with my wife, we're going to Geneva and St. Charles and Naperville. And there was just, there was nothing keeping us here. And as a true Batavian, I grew up here, my wife grew up here. We both graduated from Batavia High. We're raising our kids here. This was where we wanted to put our investment. And I am definitely happy that we did. And hopefully, we can, you know, expand in the same, same community.
Yeah, what, what would the capacity be? You say it's for a party room. How many people are we talking?
We actually, we went through it with the Fire Department. They came through, walked through it several times, and they gave us, I think it was anything under 47, we were good. And we, there's only one exit, the front exit. So as long as we didn't have more than 47 people, we were good. So that's, that's our cap. I really don't want to go over 40 or 45, to be honest with you. And that's something that we'll be keeping a close eye on.
Okay, and then, so before you talk about the space next door, the prohibitive cost for build-out, what, what, what would need to be done at this facility that's?
So then, the nice thing about that space is that the infrastructure is there. There's bathrooms there. There's plumbing already going to what already kind of looks like a bar. So it's really just a, a simple remodel. Our initial estimates came in at right around $100,000, which, given my experience, that'll be about 150 or 200 grand. But again, because the space is smaller, I think we can, we can keep that in, in check, especially not having to build bathrooms and dig up concrete and do the, the sprinklers. It's already there. Everything's there. We just have to make it look beautiful.
And then, and, you know, you say it's two separate businesses, but people come there because they can order food, and that's coming from employees of the other business.
Correct. So we have, Riverside's essentially three different businesses. It's, it's delivery, it's pickup, and it's dine-in. So I've got delivery drivers that are waiting for deliveries. In their downtime, they will bring over the food to overflow. Same with pickup, phone staff. There is, if, if any of your kids have ever worked for me, you know that I don't allow any real downtime. There's always something to do. So that's something that they'll constantly look for, and it's an extension of Riverside, and that's what they'll know it as. So that service is important to us as well, getting the food there as quickly as possible.
Okay, and then the last question I have, would, would this separate business be viable without the video gaming machines?
No. So all the food that is rung in at overflow, all that money goes to Riverside. It's not an overflow profit. So we'll be paying taxes on it through overflow, but anything over that is going to Riverside. So we would be cutting, essentially, we're doing almost a catering, you know, like a, a catering order every time, and that money gets, gets sent back to Riverside. So essentially, it's just a small bar. And places like Sturdy Shelter, you know, they don't have to buy beer to make profit. They make their own, which is amazing. I wish I could make my own beer. But I have to buy beer to resell it. So there's not as much profit as people think there is in that. So it would just, it would really hinder the growth of the business and the purpose of the business.
So it's, it's vital, then, that, that business have those gaming machines?
It's, it covers overhead. It makes, it makes me able to staff it, to pay the rent, and make that staff make money, and capture that business that we'd otherwise be losing.
If it wasn't for the other company being around the corner, it wouldn't be a viable business.
Correct.
Plan.
Correct.
So I would, I would say that's exactly what you were warning us about, Mayor.
Anybody else? Alderman Pfeifer?
Since, so it can be expected that the overflow would improve business at Riverside. As a part of that, would it be feasible, and I'm not sure how council would feel about this, to move the gaming machines currently at Riverside to overflow and thus kind of balance things out? So it basically, we wouldn't see a proliferation of gaming machines. They would actually be more cordoned off to a, you know, and a more older clientele area, just as kind of a compromise solution towards what I think some concerns of council are.
That wouldn't make sense for us. That doesn't make sense to me. That the gaming machines, again, not part, not the reason of our business, but part of it, helps sustain Riverside. So you guys see it as packed, but, you know, I have 200 employees there, you know. There's, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of moving parts. And, I mean, it cover, it helps cover costs.
Alderman Chantet?
Ultimately, I guess I would, I would draw a distinction. I see what you're saying. It does still look like the two separate businesses. And Mark, I hope we can still be friends after this one. The hobbling that you're doing to this overflow business by having the profit flow into the main business shows it truly is a subsidiary. I, I understand it now. I mean, I needed to hear that. As long as there is a very clear line between them, it's pretty clear to me that this is not a standalone business because it would not exist if not for the parent business. And if there were no longer a need for overflow, there would be no longer a need for overflow, and we would, I would, we would lose four machines, or five machines.
I, I wouldn't open an overflow without a Riverside. Riverside is the parent, you know, it's, it's, it's made a name for itself. People love Riverside. And so, again, people are going to overflow because they can't get into Riverside, or, you know, or they want to acquire tonight, or they want to play some darts. Whatever it may be, Riverside is the reason.
I do. Thank you for, for going through that.
Sure.
Alderman Serone?
Yeah, I appreciate your creativity and want to support expansion of businesses in Batavia. I like Alderman Chantet on that, that fence because I don't like to see the proliferation of, of gaming machines. But can you tell me what, what's the hours of the Elgin operation?
It's the same, same as Batavia, till 1:00 a.m. during the week, Fridays and Saturdays, till 10:00 p.m.
So it's open every night?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then, so what happens? How do you, do you just put a sign up, close for private parties on, on those nights? How does that?
Yeah, we have, we put an A-frame, and we have a sign in the window, close for private party. We'll reopen, you know, whatever. If they have a private party till 10:00 p.m., then we reopen at 10:00 p.m., you know. And people, they'll walk, and then they'll go to Riverside, and then they'll come back at 10:00 p.m., you know, what have you, just to, again, hang out, play darts, quieter space, smaller space.
What's the size of the place up north?
It's 1563.
Close? Will, will this be modeled somewhat similarly?
Yeah, so it's not, it's, this space is a little wider and not as deep. So it's about 1,200 square feet.
It'll be designed similar? Like, if I go take a look at that, I'll?
It's almost identical. It's, and that's why it was like, we looked at it, and it was like, man, this is almost the same layout. It's opposite. You know, the bar is on one side and the bar is on this side. But other than that, it's almost identical.
Anybody else? Alderman Sulfah?
I just wanted to point out that I think one of the other concepts that may, might have gotten glossed over and not even discussed enough is that it would be available as, you know, a party room for various, it could be organizations, it could be family events, it could be team events. I think that's something that's actually lacking right down here in the downtown as well, which, you know, from my understanding, from what, what he just said, is that the one up in Elgin is booked for the next couple of months already. So I mean, I can imagine that would probably be a similar situation here in Batavia. And I think that would be a definite added bonus to add to the downtown area.
It's, it's become a great party room, I will say. And people come in, they, they decorate the space, you know, happy 40th, or congrats, or this, or that. And then, you know, we, we have coolers, so they bring their cakes. And, you know, it's, it's become a really cool private event function.
Yeah, just want to let you know, when I do vote, no, it's nothing personal. It's something that is, I've, I've had this stance ever since I've been on council. Just don't want to see the proliferation of it. I don't want to stifle your business. Your pizza and your wings are fantastic.
Thank you.
And I, I still go. So I'm, maybe I'm, people will look at me and say, you're not principled enough to boycott the business because they have gaming. But it's just not what I want to see in, in Batavia. So it sounds like, it sounds like you probably have enough people to vote yes, that it won't matter what I vote. But I want you to know when that does come up, but it's nothing personal. So.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
I would just add to that. I, I would support the idea minus the video gaming. That's, that's, to me, this just looks like a loophole to get around with it. And I think it's exactly what the mayor talked about. It wouldn't be a viable business if it wasn't for the gaming machines, just like a strip mall gaming room with a cooler.
Well, it wouldn't be a viable business without Riverside. The gaming machines help sustain the business. I wouldn't open, if Riverside wasn't there, I wouldn't open.
Really an expansion of the business, then?
It is an expansion of the business.
Alderman Sulfah?
I would point out that this is not exactly what anybody's warning anybody about. This is not a way to get extra gaming machines. I think it's made clear, the reason for the gaming machines is to sustain overhead expenses. But the main reason for the place is to act as overflow for Riverside, which is beneficial for the downtown, provide a party room, provide an alternative. I mean, so the whole Armageddon, this is exactly what we're being warned about, is, I believe, over the top on overflow.
Just wanted to echo what Malley and Uer said. Apologize ahead of time. I love your establishment, but I also do not want to see the spread go into any more spaces. So I will do. And I'm curious, going back, because I wasn't on council during the first initial discussion, but why did we limit it to five per business to begin with and not expand Two years after that, they expanded it to allow six terminals at liquor license holding establishments, and I believe 10 terminals at truck stops. And we chose to keep our limits the same rather than expanding them when the state expanded it.
Why was that?
Why was that? There was a sentiment on council that several members were opposed to the expansion of it. And so there, we just left it where it was.
Did I also mention, I don't think I'm going to have five games. There's not enough space, I think probably three or four. But those three or four will just help.
It's also good to remember, too, that we are, from what we were at previously, we are five machines down from Aquave not having.
And the moon.
What?
And the moon?
Oh, yeah.
So you're 10 machines down?
Yeah.
So what's another four? I'm just joking.
Might add to the conversation that Laura and myself and Scott, did you go with this? What was it? We had somebody in the car. Who? Anthony? We, we went up to South Elgin and visited him at, at the location, and he took us around and showed us the building around the corner from where he was. It made a lot of good sense. I mean, and, and he runs a, really a top-notch place. I get very nice things said about Riverside by people in town. And as he said, his, your wife's family, I know is from Batavia because I went to school with some of them. And you say, did you graduate from Batavia's high school, too?
I did, yeah.
Okay. So this is not some new person just floating into town here. This is some longtime Batavia residents who, everything they've done so far seems to be in the best interest of Batavia to make it a better place for people to live and work and whatever. So I would encourage it if we could. Now, I don't think we're going to vote on this tonight, isn't it? This will go to the committee of the whole meeting, and then it'll be at the next council meeting?
No, this will be, because gaming is a conditional use, and so it will follow the conditional use process that goes before the plan commission first.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's all I have. Anyone else? Well, thank you so much for hearing me out, I really appreciate it. I do have to get back to the restaurant, there's two Monday night football games. Thank you so much again.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, do we have any other matters from the public for items not on the agenda? All right, the next thing is a proclamation honoring the foreign exchange students from Batavia High School we have. And I believe we have four here in the audience tonight. And let me just read the proclamation, and I've already signed, but I really need to have you vote for the approval of the forum if we could. And then we're going to have them introduced for a second. Says proclamation, whereas a great majority of exchange students who have come to the United States to attend high school enjoy positive life-changing experiences, grow in independence and maturity, improve their English language skills, and build relationships with U.S. citizens. And whereas the city of Batavia has a multi-generational history of welcoming people from all regions of our world due in large part to the opening in 1966 of the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory, which has brought thousands of scientists and engineers from around the world to visit, take up residence, or attend educational opportunities offered within our community. And whereas students who participate in the exchange program share the knowledge and goodwill derived from their exchange experience with fellow citizens upon their return to their home countries. And whereas education is one of the greatest investments an individual can make in their future and is an enhancement through their, through the cultural exchange. Now therefore, the city of Batavia sincerely appreciates, welcomes, and recognizes, and offers its gratitude, and then we put the name of the four, one of the four, and there's four of them to give away, for attending Batavia High School under Field, American Field Services, USA, the Foreign Exchange Student Program, and for a commitment to academic excellence and cultural enrichment. Now, we have somebody in the audience, and you gotta, you get up and, come up and use the mic, if you would, and introduce yourself. And then we will, and you're going to introduce the girls, because, not the girls, the students. And I can't pronounce those names.
Oh, I'm not sure I can get them all right either. But my name is Robin Lang, and I've been involved with AFS Intercultural Program since I was 16 years old and went on exchange. And I've been volunteering for a really long time with this program. And I'd like to thank you for your recognition of the students that the high school is able to host each year. And it did start apparently the year before Fermi was here because in 1965, we had our first student from Norway. And since then, we, the, Batavia High School has hosted anywhere from two to four or five students every year. This year, AFS has three of the students, and one of the students is from another program called EF. So they do accept other programs, too, which is great. So Batavia has, AFS also does a lot of hosting. So we got, we gave you brochures about AFS hosting. You might want to think about it, and we're always looking for host families. And also, we have lots of sending programs. And I brought three flyers for the mayor to figure out where to put up. One is about Nestle Y for youth, which is for 15 to 18-year-olds who want to learn about languages. There's full ride scholarships they can apply, apply for from the, forgot the mic, from the Department of State. And also, you can go abroad with just AFS itself. And there's a Yes Abroad program and a hosting with this Youth Exchange and Study Program that is also a full ride scholarship. And we thank, we thank the schools for hosting. We make a lot of different kinds of opportunities for the teachers to learn about cultural diversity and help make their students welcome in their classrooms. And this year, we have, we'll have Stamatina come up here along with Josephine. These two are being hosted by my husband and I this year. These are our numbers six and seven. We decided we'd take two at a time because we had an empty, three empty bedrooms. So we double hosting, and Stamatina is from Greece, and Josephine is from Kenya. So those are two.
Okay. Why don't you introduce them all, and then we're going to put them in the center to get them on TV?
Okay, then, then we'll have Mariona come up here. Mariona is from Spain, and she's being hosted by the Diaz family, which are back there, her parents and sister. And we have Rafaela, and she's being hosted by the Wolf? Wollock. I know it gives me, Wollock family. And there, and she's being hosted with EF, so.
All right, why don't you guys kind of follow me and get you in the center of the desk up here? That way we.
Have you turn around and look out for the audience that way?
Now, I want to just make a couple of additions to what's already been said here. Batavia has had a very unique situation with this foreign exchange student program from the perspective that the very first one that was already mentioned came from Norway. And he was a boy, and he was over here and did quite well and was very popular. He went back to Norway, and a number of years later, he was named the Secretary of Defense for the country of Norway. So it's not like, you know, some folks that didn't accomplish much in their life. But I'm told that he always said that his year he spent in Batavia was really a, a really step forward for him as far as what he could do as a student and what he could do as an adult. And I know we were quite tickled when he got that honor because it was something that Batavia could be very proud of. So one of the things I have.
Does he need some help?
I got a copy of the history book that I owe.
The quiz is on Friday. Just kidding.
I only, I only wrote part of that book, but I did write a part of it. And then we have a copy of the proclamation that was read and acted on by the city council. And so we have Mariana. Josephine. Stamatina. And Rafael. And I really would, again, thank you for coming to Batavia. I hope this is something you'll remember for the rest of your life and that Batavia will always be in your heart as a place where you found friendly people and a great American experience. And we are very, very proud of Batavia High School. They give us a lot to be proud of in this town. And certainly, its foreign exchange student program is one of them. As I've just indicated, we've had the Secretary of Defense from Norway walk the halls of Batavia for nine months. So it's something that we're very proud of. So thank you all for coming. Want to take a picture?
Hold your book.
Hold your books.
There we go. Make it look.
Yours is upside down, okay. All right, here we go, one, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Pardon me? Could I ask where's our fourth student visiting from?
She's from Sweden.
Ah, very good. Thank you.
EF Exchange. They actually headquartered in Sweden. They work with over 50 countries and have been doing it for over four years.
Welcome, and thank you for your year you're spending with us. And you're making Batavia a better place for all of our young people to grow up and get to know people from other parts of the world. And that's, I think, an important part of the future in this world that we live in. So thank you for what you're doing.
I was just about to say, I just showed Dan, a friend from 1984 that was here for my senior year. And we're still friends with him, we're trying to get him to come back from Germany for our reunion next year. But it's, it is a really good program. I've known people that have done both hosting and, you know, go away. And it's, it's a really good program, so good to see.
Very good, well, thank you again for coming. I know you mentioned you got to go, so feel free.
They all have something called homework.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, why don't you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that proclamation that was just read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion and second, Kirk Coldero.
Solfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item nine, which is another proclamation for Batavia Flag Day Monument Day, October 1st, 2023. Alderman Chanet, do you have this?
Do, Your Honor. A proclamation. Whereas the city of Batavia and the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization have joined hands in a historic endeavor to honor the legacy of Dr. Bernard J. Segren, a remarkable Batavia dentist who played a pivotal role in establishing National Flag Day. And whereas this extraordinary effort culminated in the construction of the Flag Day Monument, a symbol of unity, patriotism, and reverence for our nation's flag and heritage. And whereas the Flag Day Monument, valued at $1.5 million, stands as a testament to the dedication of countless individuals, organizations, and businesses that contributed to its realization, symbolizing the unwavering commitment of our community to the principles of liberty and democracy. Whereas the monument features a 40-foot diameter helix design, a 10-foot wide walkway, a majestic 50-foot flagpole, and various elements commemorating iconic flag events, U.S. population growth, official flags flown by the U.S., armed conflicts, and a ring of honor with names of Congressional Medal of Honor recipients from Illinois. And whereas the Flag Day Monument not only stands as a tribute to the past, but also as a symbol of hope and unity for future generations, with space reserved for additional milestones and commemorative bricks along the walkway, ensuring that our neighbors and children can continue to write the chapters of our nation's history. And whereas the dedication ceremony for the Flag Day Monument, scheduled for October 1st, 2023, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Patriots Park, 100 North Island Avenue, Batavia, will be marked by a program featuring esteemed speakers, a ribbon-cutting ceremony, raising of the flag, a flyover tribute, musical performances, and various festivals for all to enjoy. And whereas the entire Batavia community is encouraged to celebrate the day by flying the American flag at their homes and businesses as well as attend this historic event. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2023 as a Flag Day Monument Dedication Day in Batavia. And I encourage all residents, neighboring communities, and visitors to join us in celebrating this momentous occasion. Let us gather together to honor the legacy of Dr. Bernard J. Segren and to pay tribute to our nation's flag and to reinforce the values of unity and patriotism that bind us as a community and as a nation. And with this, where, and I have here in two, set on my hand and cause seal of the city of Batavia to be affixed as 18th day of September, 2023. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Move, Alderman Chanet, second, Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the Flag Day proclamation. Any discussion? I would just offer that I'd like to encourage all of you to come to this at some point during the day and bring your families down and take a look at seriously what we've put together there. We've got some very interesting connections with the American flag that nobody else has gotten. And while we can't put everything out there in that monument, that case that's in the back of the room here is going to soon feature some, some stories of different things that have happened in Batavia that we find very interesting. And one of them is, is that in 1916, there was a Batavia High School yearbook issued with an eighth grade class from the West Side. And in that class were two girls. One of them was the doctor, was the daughter of Dr. Bernard Segren. And the other one was a girl whose father was the minister of the Methodist Church up on Batavia Avenue. Her name was Marion Moon. And as it turned out, Segren gets a lot of the recognition for June 14th being named American Flag Day because that was the day that Betsy Ross brought it over to the Congress in 1878 or whenever it was. And so Dr. Segren always thought that day should be it. And lo and behold, because World War I was getting ready to break out in 1918, he issued a proclamation proclaiming June 14th to be Flag Day, and it's been issued ever since. So we got that. And then Marion Moon was there. And as many of you probably know, Marion Moon ends up being the mother of Buzz Aldrin, who was the U.S. astronaut who landed on the moon and had the unique opportunity to bring the American flag out of the landing capsule and plant it on the moon's surface. So we had two girls in that same class whose parents or whose lives took them in very unique roles into the history of the American flag. So we're not just blowing our own horn here. We got some U.S. history that's pretty significant behind us as far as the American flag goes. So I'm, I'm very pleased about that. And I think there's a lot that Batavia can blow its horn on in, in support of this because if, you know, of all the documents that are sacred in the life of America, certainly the flag is right there at the top of the list. And it's something that people take, and rightfully so, great honor in showing and flying and holding and whatever. And, you know, many people are buried with it over their coffin, and others are certainly, you know, fly it every day out their front door or on their front lawn. So we, we have something here that is unique. And Batavia is a little bit stronger as an American flag community than probably most of the other places around us. But because we have this kind of unique connections with its American history as it unfolded in the, in the history of the United States. So please, on the first, come on down and attend the ceremonies and walk around, take a look at the monument. Former Alderman Dave Brown has done a phenomenal job of kind of overseeing the construction of that thing, and he's volunteered his time. And there's another committee, and I don't want to start naming them because I forget some. There's about five or six other people that have really, really, really stepped forward and done hundreds of hours of work and raised money and do all kinds of stuff. So they'll be named, I'm sure, on the, at the ceremony. So I appreciate the good efforts, and again, something for Batavia to be very excited about. And that'll be something that I would suggest 100 years from now, there will still be people stopping. or get any kind of carryout you like from your favorite Batavia restaurant. More information is available at the Batavia Parks Foundation Instagram and Facebook sites, as well as our website. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions of Britta?
I would just like to encourage, again, anybody that's here to come forward, come on down that night and attend this. That's a very interesting opportunity to meet new people and to certainly pay some tribute to kind of what Batavia's been all about all these years. And again, between the Flag Day and the Peace Day, we've got, I think, some strong national sentiments that we're really taking to the local level and really speaking to the people about the importance of both of them. And so I really appreciate that Britta and her committee and those in the Flag Day have stepped forward and really raised lots of money and done all kinds of good stuff to make this a very special place on the face of the earth. And because of groups like this, I think we're on our way to be that special place. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next is item 11, Main Street. Beth?
Hi, thanks so much for having me tonight. First of all, I want to thank everybody who helped make Block Party a great success this year. It was a great night, and we had great attendance. We're kind of wrapping up our event season. We've got Bat Fest coming up on October 28th. The indoor market will open on November 4th, and we are moving to Grainology, which is located at 131 Flynn Street, Suite C. So we're really excited about that change. And then we'll be hosting a holiday sneak peek with the downtown businesses on November 9th, from 5:00 to 8:00, so you can come out and make your shopping list or do a little bit of early shopping. And then we have Winterfest Art Market on November 10th through the 11th at Water Street Studios, The Dock, Hearth &amp; Hammer, and Kiss the Sky. Boardwalk shops are still going well. Overall, sales are down from previous seasons, but that is an overall trend throughout downtown with the businesses. So we're just continuing to promote as much as we can to help them out. Crybaby Wellness/Fat Sam's for Pets has moved to 104 First Street. Throne Threads, which is a current boardwalk shop tenant, will be having their open house for their new location on Wednesday, and that is on September 20th, from 4:00 to 9:00. They're at 125 South Batavia Avenue. And then now I'm going to invite Joe Hunt up from the Batavia Food Pantry. Dinner Table was a great success again this year. We really appreciate all the help that we received from all the volunteers. It takes over 50 volunteers on the day of to make that event possible. Lots of hours from volunteers prior. We have three presenting sponsors for that event: Aldi, BEI, and K. Hollis Jeweler Boutique and Wine Bar. But this year, we were able to raise over $6,300 for the food pantry. And here's Joe to say a few words.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. So I just want to say thank you so much to Beth, Batavia Main Street, for hosting Dinner Table event. This is by far my favorite event in Batavia, and this year's, I think, was the best one yet. I think the weather was perfect. If you were there, attendance was great, the food was amazing, so it's only getting better and better year after year. Honestly, it's events like this that really help make a difference to individuals and families in this community and really just show how amazing of a talent it is that we live in. So I just wanted to thank the city for their continued support of the food pantry and Main Street for your support. So thank you, everybody.
Any questions for me before I leave? Yes.
I know that I sent this in my email back to you, but if any of you are not aware, Main Street has a weekly email newsletter that is sent to you, and they highlight different businesses and organization and events going on. So I saw that. I probably missed a couple of them, but I responded back to Beth of how great it was to get that information about our different businesses. They put a lot of work into that. And again, it's weekly that you do that?
Yeah, it goes out every Thursday.
Yeah, right to your email. So go to Batavia, tell them where to go sign up.
If you go to our website, downtownbatavia.com, there is a subscribe button, and we'd love to have you subscribe. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
All right.
Moving then to item 12, Approval to Waive Formal Bidding and Award a Contract for Water Treatment Iron Lagoon Cleaning to Stewart Spreading. Who's got this one?
It would be me.
Yeah, thank you, I.
Just, we went over this in committee last week. We've got to get rid of the iron, and because of that, the first approval is for waiving formal bidding. So it came here in full consent. So we, there's a special company that does this, basically one in the Midwest, so it was, we couldn't go out to official bids. So I would, unless anybody has any comment, I would make a motion that we approve waiving formal bidding to award the contract to water treatment iron lagoon cleaning to Stewart Spreading.
Second.
Move by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Wolf, to waive formal bidding on the contract for water treatment iron lagoon cleaning to Stewart Spreading. Any discussion?
Kirk Calderon.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item 13, which is Resolution 23-109-R, authorizing execution of a contract for water treatment iron lagoon cleaning to Stewart Spreading for an amount not to exceed $115,000. Who's got this one?
That's me again. Again, this comes to the council with unanimous vote of approval by the committee. It's only, it would have been on the consent agenda if it weren't for having to waive formal bidding. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-109-R, authorizing execution of a contract for water treatment iron lagoon cleaning with Stewart Spreading for an amount not to exceed $115,000.
Move by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Wolf, for the Resolution 23-109-R for the contract for the water treatment lagoon cleaning. Any further discussion?
Kirk Calderon.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item 13, which is Resolution 23-109-R, authorizing execution of a contract for water treatment iron lagoon cleaning to Stewart Spreading for an amount not to exceed $115,000. Who's got this one?
That's me again. Again, this comes to the council with unanimous vote of approval by the committee. It's only, it would have been on the consent agenda if it weren't for having to waive formal bidding. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-109-R, authorizing execution of a contract for water treatment iron lagoon cleaning with Stewart Spreading for an amount not to exceed $115,000.
Move by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Lancy, for the Resolution 23-109-R for the contract for the water treatment lagoon cleaning. Any further discussion?
Kirk Calderon.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 14, Administrator's Report. Laura, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the Committee of the House meeting, we discussed utilizing some funding that we had set aside to assist businesses to recover from the global pandemic, to enhance the Chamber of Commerce's ability to provide the Grow Your Business scholarships in partnership with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurial Center. And I spoke with Margaret, and she said that she would be very honored to receive a grant of $10,000 from the city this year. That would allow them to give two more scholarships in addition to the two that they are currently planning to give out. And that is because the Fox Valley Entrepreneurial Center is, matches a $5,000 grant that the Chamber of Commerce gives. So that would be the same for us, too. And so in total, there will be four scholarships. Our two will definitely be put toward Batavia businesses. And she wanted me to extend her thanks to all of you for supporting that program, which has, this is the second year or the second installment of it, and it definitely has kick-started a lot of existing businesses' ability to grow within our community. So thank you very much for your support in providing that funding. We have a couple of construction projects that are kicking off here. One is our wastewater treatment plant, the next phase of that, which will go for multiple years. It will require a rerouting of the bike path that currently exists between the existing food pantry building and the rest of the wastewater treatment plant. Initially, that bike route will go to the same place that it did during Phase 1, so up Union Street and Water Street. We continue to pursue grant funding to be able to permanently move that bike path to the shoreline that is on the west bank of the river adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. So we hope that sometime during this multiple-year project that we will be successful in securing grant funding to be able to accomplish that. The other construction that is going to begin this week is on North River Street and the intersection of North River Street and Wilson Street. As you recall, we have applied to IDOT to convert North River Street to one-way, and that was approved and we received a permit, but there was a delay in receiving the electronic equipment associated with the new signal that is going to be put in place there. We received very short notice last week that the electronics have now arrived, and our contractor is able to begin that construction. And so the intersection of, at North River Street, will be completely closed off. And so those who need to enter the block of North River Street between Wilson Street and State Street would have to do so from the State Street side. It will no longer be one-way, it'll be bidirectional, will cover the signs that note that it's a one-way street so that people who have to get in there, you know, off the alleyways where their parking is, they can get in there or for deliveries to drop off. So that will be commencing this Thursday, September 21st. Also wanted to announce that at the Batavia Police Department, as of September 14th, Officer Brian Lorden has been promoted to Watch Commander. He's on the 3:00 to 11:00 shift. And also, the food pantry has been, received the keys to their new location, which is at 431 North Redant, and they are going to be moving their operations over the next several weeks, and they're going to need volunteers to help them with that. And so if you go to their website, which is bataviafoodpantry.org, and click on Volunteer, you can sign up to help them with that project. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Lehman?
I'm just curious with the rerouting of the bike path up Union and Water Street, do we have a timeline on when that will happen?
I don't have a specific date right now, but I am guessing that it is actually going to happen here within the next, like, 10 days to two weeks.
Oh, so very soon.
Yeah, very soon.
I would love a discussion about the safety of those roads, Union and Water, and First Street with the added bicycle traffic. Being someone who is over there quite often, I have concerns with, I've always had concerns with those roads, but with the added bicycle traffic, I would like to see maybe better safety measures put in.
Sounds good. We can put that on, as a discussion item, on September 26th.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other business from the City Council tonight? All right, going to 16, the mayor's report. I just have one very short story to share with you. Last Wednesday, I was asked to be part of a seven-member suburban mayor's committee that all went into Chicago and went over to City Hall at 3:30 and had a meeting with the newly-elected mayor. So we had some, a couple of mayors from the south part of the region, a couple from the north, and a couple from the center. So I was one of the center, although everybody there was, had something to do with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and had either been a chairman or a past chairman. So we get there, and there were seven of us, and so we line up, and I was the last one in line. So Johnson comes in, and I found him to be a very enlightened, and, you know, I wasn't sure what we were getting into, but he was very professional and very And so those who need to enter the block of North River Street between Wilson Street and State Street would have to do so from the State Street side. It will no longer be one-way. It'll be bidirectional. We'll cover the signs that note that it's a one-way street so that people who have to get in there, you know, off the alleyways where their parking is, they can get in there or for deliveries to drop off. So that will be commencing this Thursday, September 21st. Also wanted to announce that at the Batavia Police Department, as of September 14th, Officer Brian Lorden has been promoted to Watch Commander. He's on the 3:00 to 11:00 shift. And also, the Food Pantry has been, received the keys to their new location, which is at 431 North Redan. And they are going to be moving their operations over the next several weeks. And they're going to need volunteers to help them with that. And so if you go to their website, which is bataviafoodpantry.org, and click on Volunteer, you can sign up to help them with that project. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Lehman?
I'm just curious with the rerouting of the bike path up Union and Water Street, do we have a timeline on when that will happen?
I don't have a specific date right now, but I am guessing that it is actually going to happen here within the next, like, 10 days to two weeks.
Oh, so very soon?
Yeah, very soon.
I would love a discussion about the safety of those roads, Union and Water and First Street with the added bicycle traffic. Being someone who is over there quite often, I have concerns with, I've always had concerns with those roads, but with the added bicycle traffic, I would like to see maybe better safety measures put in.
Sounds good. We can put that as a discussion item on September 26th.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other business from the City Council tonight? All right, going to 16, the Mayor's Report. I just have one very short story to share with you. Last Wednesday, I was asked to be part of a seven-member suburban mayor's committee that all went into Chicago and went over to City Hall at 3:30 and had a meeting with the newly-elected mayor. So we had some, a couple of mayors from the south part of the region, a couple from the north, and a couple from the center. So I was one of the center, although everybody there was, had something to do with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus and had either been a chairman or a past chairman. So we get there, and there were seven of us. And so we line up, and I was the last one in line. So Johnson comes in, and I found him to be very enlightened. And, you know, I wasn't sure what we were getting into. But he was very professional and very, you know, didn't say anything crazy that I thought, you know. He was pretty much on board and seemed to have his thoughts together and whatever. So we get, started going down the line. He gets to me, and I say, "Jeff Schelke, Mayor of Batavia." And with that, he suddenly says, "The Battlin Bulldogs! I knew them well!" And that's all he said about it, but he... Now, he was a graduate, he's a graduate of Aurora University. So I haven't, you know, it was not a time that I could talk to him about what his fascination with the Battlin Bulldogs was. But he, and he didn't talk about anybody else's town, but he talked about ours for the Battlin Bulldogs. So I thought you'd all find that very, very interesting. I will just share with you, I've spent a lot of time out of town the last six weeks. I've been in Chicago. Today, I was in Oak Brook. I've been up in the North Shore. And there's all these conversations going on